Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the American Fork City Council meeting this evening. It's good to see our chambers with people in them and a lot of familiar faces in the back. Thanks for that back row. We'll have you all come up here before long, so don't get too comfortable. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance and then we'll have an invocation by Councilmember Holly and then I will conduct the roll call. If everybody would please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My Father in heaven, we're very grateful to be gathered here this day as a city council and this beautiful building that we have and we're thankful for all the residents who have shown up today and to voice their opinions or to hear the decisions that we will make and we're thankful for all those who work in this city to make it such a great place to live, the city staff and especially the emergency personnel, the police and firefighters and EMT and everybody else. We ask thee to bless us with wisdom this night and always that we will be guided by thee in the decisions that we should make and that we will be mindful of the residents now and the residents in the future of this city that we live in. We are thankful for our Savior Jesus Christ who makes liberty possible. We say these things in his name. Amen.
Amen. Okay, I'll now conduct the roll call. Councilmember Hunter?
Here.
Councilmember Holly?
Here.
Councilmember John?
Here.
Councilmember Carol?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
Okay, well now move on to item number two. This is time we set aside for anybody that would like to address the mayor, the council, senior staff to come forward at this time. We would ask you for the public record to state your name and limit your comments to two minutes. I have one submission on paper, not limited to this one, but I will take it, take him first. And so, Mr. Matthew Jorgensen, invite you up.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Matthew Jorgensen and I've prepared a brief statement to keep my remarks clear and concise and sustain within the two-minute time limit. So I sent an email to all of you earlier today and I appreciate Tim and Ryan for responding to that. I represent the owner of an eight-acre property along the planned 700 North connector, as many of you know. I understand the city will be reviewing tonight in closed session some of the options that we've submitted regarding specifically the two acres needed for the roadway and also addressing compensation for the impacts on the remaining land. Our goal is to work cooperatively with the city to reach a fair resolution, consistent with Utah law, no more and no less than what's required for just compensation. I've worked countless hours researching these options. Most of the options reflect suggestions that are implemented from, from city, from the city staff and council, but I'm also open to other options that the city would come up with. If you love one of my options that you see tonight, great, let's talk about it. If you hate one of them, great, let's talk about that, too. I just want to move this forward. And each option that I have is supported by complete documentation for all the financial assumptions that you'll see under that. And I welcome the opportunity to review these details with the appropriate city representative when the time is right. So I just appreciate, thank you for your time, your service to the community, and thank you for your thoughtful consideration in this matter.
Is there anybody else that would like to make a public comment? If we stand down, we will close the public comment period and we'll move on to item number three. And for that, I'm going to change locations. I'm going to ask Officer Greg Meacham, Mr. Alvin Slaymaker, and Chief, sit here, or, yeah, come forward. We're not getting embarrassed too much. This is one of our favorite things to do, and we're going to be presenting a hero award tonight. Now, we don't do this every day and we don't do it for just anything, but when, when stories become available to us that we think warrant, we put them on. And this one is definitely one of those times. Let me tell you a little bit about what happened. This happened on June 24th of this year. So tonight, we have the privilege of recognizing an extraordinary act of courage and compassion by two extraordinary men. Officer Greg Meacham of the American Fork Police Department and Alvin Slaymaker. Alvin, where are you from?
Alford.
Okay. We like visitors, too. On June 24th, 2025, Officer Meacham responded to a search and rescue call at Utah Lake involving a 70-year-old man who had fallen from his kayak and was struggling to stay afloat. The man's wife had called 911, uncertain of his location and fearful for his life. As emergency units were being dispatched, Mr. Alvin Slaymaker, without hesitation, offered the use of his boat to assist Officer Meacham. Together, they quickly launched into the lake to the man's rescue. Officer Meacham and Mr. Slaymaker were able to geolocate the man's location on the lake using his cellphone. He was found clinging to his kayak, exhausted, breathless, and barely holding on. Thanks to their swift response, the man was safely pulled from the water and transported to shore where medical personnel were waiting. Days later, the rescue man wrote to the department saying, "I called 911 yesterday and you guys saved me. I'd just like to say thank you to the officer, officers and paramedics who helped me. I never got their names, but please pass on my gratitude." And that's what we're doing here tonight. Officer Meacham's actions that day went far beyond the call of duty. In a moment where hesitation could have cost a life, he demonstrated initiative, bravery, and one unwavering commitment to serve others. His quick assessment, teamwork, and compassion quite literally saved the day. Alvin Slaymaker's willingness to offer his boat and immediate assist was instrumental in his rescue. His selflessness, community spirit, and courage exemplifies the very best of American Fork. We are deeply grateful for his partnership and his heroism that day. Officer Meacham and Mr. Slaymaker, your actions embody the spirit of service and compassion that defines our community. On behalf of the City of American Fork, City Council, and our residents, it is my great privilege to present you both with a hero award in recognition, recognition of your courage, compassion, and outstanding service and declare October 28th, 2025, Officer Greg Meacham and Alvin Slaymaker Day. Thank you for being heroes in every sense of the word. So. You know what? This is totally impromptu, but I just feel the urge. You've got to help me out here, but Alvin?
Yeah.
Alvin just heard a word in my ear. It's his birthday. When is he going to have room for people to sing to him? And I know exactly, and especially these back rows, they are incredible singers in their own minds, but let's do it. I'll start it, but then I'm backing away, so you know.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Alvin. Happy birthday to you.
I'm going to put Officer Meacham. I didn't, I was going to prep him a little bit, but I'm going to say, can you just maybe just offer up a minute or so of how you felt about that day and how does it align with the normal day and how that just kind of got thrust upon you?
There is no thrust upon me. Yeah, I, I don't know about a normal day, but I know that I was on a traffic stop nearby when the call came out and I thought, well, I'll just run down there. There's not much I can do. And he was pulling out with his boat and I pulled in and I stopped him and said, hey, is there any more boats out there? And he said, nope. And I said, you want to help me for a minute? He said, sure. So he turned around and backed his boat back in and hooked it and away we went. So, yeah, it was more than just, he was sitting there in his boat. He had to turn around, come back in. So, yeah, it worked out really good.
Well, let's just ask, did you catch any fish that day?
I sure did.
You know, and I will say, I've seen some of the body cam and it was not, there was nothing about the day of the weather conditions that had anything to do with this. It was just somebody that couldn't get back in their kayak and he was of age that he'd just wore himself out and he was stranded.
Hypothermic.
Yep. And so, yeah, thank you very much. Let's have a, let's have a photo, should we? We want to make sure we remember Alvin's birthday forever. But I'm going to ask right
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, congratulations to Mr. Slaymaker and Officer Meacham, and
now because I'll forget. And I don't want anybody in blue to leave this chamber until
thank you. You know, it, it, like, like Officer Meacham said, there's not a normal
the common consent agenda. You guys always leave and then we talk really good things about you, so let's have you stay and listen to it, all right? Yeah, let's just do it right here. I'm going to move this.
day for the PD. They just can be pulled so many different directions and put in situations that really require a commitment, that's for sure. So, thank you so much. One thing, this Friday at 4 o'clock, 4:00 to 6:00, the American Fork Chamber of Commerce is hosting Trick or Treat on Main. And so, it's, it's really a fun time and there's more than just a couple of kids that come out to that. It's, it's hundreds and hundreds of kids that come to that. And we invite the public to, to join us. There's lots of candy. I don't think you can get more candy anywhere in the state than going down Main Street of American Fork, so it'll be a great time. So, please, please put that on your, on your calendars. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, David. Now, move on to item number five, our council reports, and I'll start with Councilmember Hunter.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I've known Greg a long time and I know, as I think back on, you know, the last several years on the council, one of the great moments we had was when we were able to escort the remains of Jim Chipman, thank you. And sitting there with Greg up at the airport was one thing that I, I won't soon forget. And it's not surprising, as dumb as he and I were back in high school days, nobody would have ever guessed we would be in this council chambers, I think, in the capacity that we are, but he's, he's a great man and, and carries on a legacy of, of great men who have run in the blue here in American Fork. And I know that means the world to his family. So, I just want to add my kudos. I'm sure I'm not the only one. It won't take long, but I just want to say thank you. And it's, it's just an example of, of the way our, our public safety personnel from the top all the way down. And just want to thank you for, for what you do, how you represent our city. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Councilmember Holly?
Just a couple of quick things. I mean, it looks like everybody left. I was going to say some amazing things about the police force, but now we're not going to. And so, no, they do a great job. It's, it's amazing. This is something actually specifically I mentioned to my wife while we were down in Santiago. And it's really the difference of the police presence and how they're thought of and how they're looked at in the community. This isn't to knock more on where my wife's from, but it just, it is amazing how much a part of the community our police officers are and how much they mean and how much we integrate with each other and how we know each other and everything like that. It really does make a difference in what our city's like because of that. From my HBC commission meeting the other day, we're just working on some really cool projects. I've reached out to some city staff about them, Camden as well, about some ideas that we're working on with the HBC, both short-term and long-term. And so, once again, just excited to have a fully fledged, fleshed-out commission that's bringing a lot of different ideas and different backgrounds to work on some of the projects that we have. The last thing is just kind of a fun thing. I think the city posted this, but there's this spooky AF map of all the houses. And I did go check some of them out. There's some really, really awesome ones, especially I think it's on like 100 North or something. It's one, it's kind of south of here. Anyway, it's a great one. And there's this little skeleton that's on the other side of the street says, wish I lived across the street. And then by far, that's like the funniest thing. And also, I found out that my almost two-year-old son does not appreciate the jumping up animatronic wolves. And he probably will never trust me again, but they're great decorations, so definitely go check out some of the local Halloween stuff. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember John?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll, I'll start on a, on a sad note. We had our fourth fatality in American Fork Canyon just last week this year. So, it's been a rough year, but our police force was one of the responders. We had a, a serious accident up there. And I am so grateful that we didn't have a fatality out on Utah Lake. I've had the opportunity to interact with Officer Meacham, good and bad. And I am grateful for their dedication to their job. Like I said, we've had good and bad interactions and it was my fault about his. So, Officer Meacham, thank you for being there. That said, I am grateful for all of our public safety. You know, it's, it's not good when we, I get called on any time there's a car in the river. So, I'm up there quite a bit and I've probably been up there over a dozen times this year. And to have four fatalities, including the drowning in Silver Lake, is kind of sad. And I'm grateful that we didn't have another in Utah Lake. So, gentlemen in the back row, thank you very much. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
And ladies, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Carol?
Thanks, Mayor. I think that I will let you know that I, we, I did go to the library, last library board meeting. They're doing some great things. They did a staff retreat for the first time this year, just a half, half a day, where they got together and really coalesced all of their staff in mission orienting, which I thought was really cool. Our library has received the Quality Library Award. I'm sure Cassandra would love to sell you herself. She will. She'll come and will do an official, but I wanted to let you know, the work that they do is well-recognized and we have this Quality Library Award that we get from the State Library Association. One thing we did talk about was we got our first report of our new library loaning system, and it looks like it's working exactly as planned. The numbers will be, so far are in line of what we were planning that they would be as far as proportional to each city. I'm sure we'll get a report at some time that you'll be able to see those in more detail, but know that that's coming in and we're seeing numbers as they come in. That's one of the benefits of the system that they chose is that they actually can get the data a lot more easily. Okay, the other thing is, I will just comment on the police. We haven't had you in here for a little while and I am so grateful for the work that you do. And we do have a good relationship. I can see that, Tim. The idea of, and this is one of the things that Chief Falslev talked to me about one day, is we don't want people to be scared necessarily. We want to make sure that we're community building and keeping the community safe. And I feel like you do a really good job of that. So, thank you very much. That's my report.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Taylor?
Yes, Mayor. So, just a couple of things. Until Ryan said that tonight, Officer Meacham, was your grandfather Joe Meacham? So, we call him Slow Joe. He pulled me off the streets many a time. And, and I still remember the giant, the giant light, it seems like it was light green or yellow Chevy that he drove, that was, was the police car. And, and I, I just, I think that's awesome. I think that's awesome. Your grandfather, from my knowledge, was a tremendous individual, served the city well for many, many years. And I just remember him being a, being a pillar. And in those days, you know, just, just like it's been said, we knew all of the police officers. We, we knew the chief. We, we talked to him. We had, you know, we had great relationships with him. I remember when Merrill Finlayson became the first officer inside the schools, everyone fell in love with Merrill. And, and the police in American Fork have continually, consistently been, been just tremendous assets to our city, not only from the standpoint of protection, but the standpoint of loyalty and friendship. And, and I just, I think that goes to, to this award, you know. I, I probably have had a bit of a charmed life, and I've said this before, so I apologize for those of you that have heard it, but I don't recall ever going to work a day in my life where I feared for my life, where there was a chance that my life would ever be in jeopardy. I don't remember too many experiences, there had been a couple, where I have been involved in trying to help an individual. I don't know if it was to the degree of saving their life. But this, the, the ability that you men and women possess to forget self and to dive in and to help a situation is not a small feat, not for a city, but more for humanity, for what you're willing to do to, to make a difference and to help people and to, to save their lives. That's just, there's no reward, there's no pay, there's no accolade that can repay that. That is a, that is a gift just by your very willingness to put your life on the line and to, to take the chance of that daily. And I greatly appreciate that. I admire and respect all of you for what you do and for the, the, the difficulty that you volunteer for every day. And so, I, I just greatly appreciate that. And, and too bad Mr. Slaymaker didn't remain. He probably had to get out and celebrate his 60th birthday, so we appreciate him being here as well. But that's community. That, that's community. It's people coming together, looking out for one another and, and I just, I want to live here forever with that kind of attitude and this kind of people and of which I am the least. And so, I thank all of you, and particularly tonight, Officer Meacham, thank you very much. And thank your grandfather for having a great part in raising another great man. So, thank you.
For the mayor's report, I'm going to just kind of build on that and maybe add to it if I could. I think I've said it to maybe here and there, I don't know, to the, the entire group, but it was witnessed here tonight that when we pray in our city council meetings, we pray for you. And I hope you heard that. I don't know if you, even no, no matter where your faith is, know that ours is exercise that you might be safe. And I don't know if there's ever a prayer that's not somewhere invoking all of those who protect us. I'm fully aware that when you come to work, you put on a bulletproof vest. And that in itself implies just inherent risk. And you do that for our community. There is a couple of things that I've learned. If I have an event, or no matter, even if, let's just say, even trunk or treat, that's coming up, I'll be one of the crowd. But when they see an officer, it immediately invokes something much bigger than any one person or the mayor or any other status. Officer, firefighters, that uniform represents the entire community. And I really believe that our citizens feel that. And that's an earned thing. Several years ago, an Officer Meacham, he might remember this, I don't know, I, he took me on a ride-along. It was the first ride-along in a very, very long time. He didn't know me very well. I mean, I didn't know him, but we got to know each other on that ride-along. There's one thing that I, I want to point out. So, we were just below the golf course. I'm going to get you some real deets here, people. And he pulled over a young man and he brought the license back into the car. And he looked at that and he did some really quick math, as I know all of you do. And he knew that if he would have given this young man a ticket, he would have had his license revoked. He was just too close to that threshold of speeding and his license revoked. And I, I just watched how he masterfully handled it. Didn't know, didn't know how good it was until it really happened, but it was second nature to Officer Meacham. He went back to the car and I'm, and I'm just guessing, I'm, in my mind, this is what you were thinking, what am I going to do here? What's the justice and the mercy in this call with this young man? So, what did he do? He says, he asked the young man to get out his phone and he said, let's call your parents. And I want to talk to your parents and I want you to talk to them. And they had a little conversation and there was a commitment made to everybody there that he wouldn't do it and just, I did this and I was wrong. And he understood that and, and then he let him on, on his way. And boy, there is, there is the discretion of an officer in just one little circumstance where we really want to take this young man's license away from him, maybe ruin his senior year in high school, junior year in high school. And I think that was the perfect thing to do. And that's just a day in life, as this day was. You just never know. So, from the bottom of my heart and the city's heart, thank you for all that you do. It means a lot. A couple of other things I want to mention. I had a ribbon cutting that I went to, very unique new business in American Fork. This was on Saturday and it's called The Rug Room. And I'll tell you where it's at if you're coming out of the post office. And so, you exit in one way, you almost could just go straight into this business. So, it's along that Merchant Street. And it's a unique idea, somebody that's very excited, made a big investment in the building and his space. And if you want to have a date night or go by yourself or with a group, whatever it might be, you go in there and you could actually just make a rug with different yarn colors. You can get very creative. And this young man has the hopes and dreams of this franchise all across the country and he's starting here. And so, Mrs. Frost and I will be making a rug sometime soon. I know that. So, she's here tonight, by the way. And then trunk or treat. You're going to see thousands and thousands of kids collide on our Main Street. And it's a lot of fun. I'm going to tell you right now, warn you right up front, the mayor will be letting his hair down. And I mean that quite literally because I am wearing a wig and I don't get a chance very often to let my hair down. But we will be there celebrating with these kids and having fun with them and sending them home with a whole bunch of sugar because they make a haul that night. So, that is the mayor's report. And thank you for staying. I wanted you to hear this because I knew it would happen. And you stay as long as you want. We'll now move on to the common consent agenda, consisting of four items, three of them being minutes and then the ratification of city payments. And if there have been any noted changes on the minutes, Tara Lynn. Any questions by the council for staff? And if not, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd move approval of the common consent agenda.
Have a motion by Councilmember?
Aye.
Councilmember John?
Aye.
Councilmember Holly?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Hunter?
Aye.
Okay, item number one is a review and action on an agreement with UDOT for statewide utility license agreement. And that, David, I'm going to like to kind of just lead into this and again, I just, for the public, we have packets that are days in advance. They're given to us last week. We understand and we read them, but I think it's good for the public to understand that, maybe just a synopsis.
Sure. So, as you're aware-
But we will be there celebrating with these kids and having fun with them and sending them home with a whole bunch of sugar, because they make a haul that night. That is the mayor's report, and thank you for staying. I wanted you to hear this, because I knew it would happen. And you stay as long as you want. We'll now move on to the common consent agenda, consisting of four items, three of them being minutes, and then the ratification of city payments. And if there have been any noted changes on the minutes, Carol Lynn? Any questions by the council for staff? And if not, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd move approval of the common consent agenda.
Have a motion by Councilmember?
Aye.
Councilmember John?
Aye.
Councilmember Holly?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Hunter?
Aye.
Okay, item number one is a review and action on an agreement with UDOT for statewide utility license agreement. That, David, I'm going to like to kind of just lead into this, and again, just for the public, we have packets that are days in advance, they're given to us last week. We understand them, we read them, but I think it's good for the public to understand that, maybe just a synopsis.
Sure. So, as you're aware, UDOT has several roadway corridors, several rightways through our city, 5th East, 1st East, State Street. So, we have utilities in all of those corridors, and we need permission from UDOT to actually have our utilities there. And this agreement basically says we will maintain those utilities, and we have the right to be there. And there are times where we have to go fix those utilities, and we have to cut up a UDOT roadway. So, they are requiring an agreement from us, and that agreement is a five-year term. We've had a current one, it's now expired. UDOT's asking for us to do another agreement. With that, we will have to post a surety bond for any of the improvements in that, in the rightway. So, it's a really standard agreement, and UDOT has been very good to work with. As you know, 100 East, we replaced the water line. We've actually gone from 100 North all the way to 700 North on 100 East. And UDOT was great to work with. They, yeah, they've been great. So, it's a pretty standard agreement.
Do they make any changes from five years ago? Do you know?
Any other questions?
May I move to approve the statewide utility license agreement with UDOT and authorize city staff to execute the agreement?
Okay. A motion by Councilmember Holly. A second. A second by Councilmember Hunter. Any discussion on this motion? Call for a vote. Councilmember Hunter?
Aye.
Councilmember John?
Aye.
Councilmember Carol?
Aye.
Councilmember Holly?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Okay, item number two is a consideration of the appeal by Dunn Construction LLC and Mike Dunn on the denial of a business license for Dunn Construction LLC. This is, was tabled, we are now back. I wanted, if I could, put a couple suggestions as the mayor. I think that we have a really, we have come to some terms with some concession, or some stipulations, but I think it's in order for having you come up, and maybe just tell us how you feel, maybe give us just, you know, a brief description of where you think we're at, and then we'll go into deliberation. But I think that we're able to move this forward, but let's see if there's anything that's changed near my... I think if it's not anything new, then we're good. We know what happened the last time, so go ahead.
Well, we do have a couple of developments that we ought to mention. And so, it seemed wise last time to pause the consideration of our appeal and to, for some additional action to be taken. And one of the things that has happened is that an amended site plan was submitted. We, Mr. Dunn had a site plan that had been conditionally approved in 2024, and still had, it was still in effect. And I think we explained last time why the south hat, or south acreage of the property had not been included in the initial site plan. But an amended site plan has been submitted. And so, I'd like to have Paul Washburn just very briefly explain what has been done in that regard.
You know what, let me ask you, is this at all indicative of a business license?
Yes.
Is it tied to your business license?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Go ahead, Paul.
Okay, I'll go ahead. The last meeting had a lengthy discussion. I think you guys were really tired when you went home. Apologize for that. But one of the questions was, is you wanted a more complete site plan. We have completed that. It doesn't amend the existing site plan at all. It just goes into that south area and shows where material would be stored, where a waste station would be in place, and where the crushing station would be located. And that's been done. When we first approached the city about developing that property, we had a buyer for one of the buildings, or a tenant for one of the buildings. Because of the length of time it took to do the approvals, and I remember you had a number of changes in staff over a period of time, and it got very confused. But it was finally approved. By the time we had that, that interested in the property. Since then, we do now have another tenant that would like to move into that front building, and we will be developing it probably as early in the spring as we can. I think there's a site plan. That front building will be developed, hopefully, early this spring. And then, in the rear area of the property, we've shown where materials will be stored. The intention ultimately for this site, obviously, it needs to continue to be raised. It needs to be raised about five feet in some areas. Once that is completed, we can go ahead and get buildings built. I think there's more money in the buildings than there is in the crushing, so it's probably the direction we build. But we've got to get the site built first. And I think that's the short version. If there's any questions, we'd be glad to answer those.
Well, you know, if we don't have them, we might have them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think the emphasis here is that there was no new engineering on this, in this amended plan. And that's because all of the engineering for drainage, for, you know, everything that pertains to the property had already been done. And so, it's been amended to just show a couple of things, as Mr. Washburn has indicated, where the cement processing equipment would be. It's mobile, it's, you know, it's movable. Sometimes there's one, sometimes there's two, depending on need. And then, just the locations where material, the final product, would be placed pending someone purchasing it and hauling it off, or Mr. Dunn delivering it. And the other thing that was done was there were some additional fencing that was added. We believe that based on Mr. Dudley's, Roger Dudley's, site plan, that it complies with all of the requirements. It was a very minor addition, wasn't done initially simply because it was mobile equipment, it was, you know, transient material that's there and then gone. And hopefully, we have satisfied the city in regard to amending the site plan. But in any event, we didn't think that it required additional engineering or any, you know, starting over again, no reason to start over. And so, the, there was another issue that had come up about the site disturbance, I think that was the terminology. And so, what happened was that because this property is within the Lakeland Industrial Park, and it was owned at the time by Mr. Steve Felon, who came and addressed us last time. He's the one that had the permit. We have the permit, we've given the permit to council and to the, and I assume that everybody is well aware of that now. But the building up of the elevation of the property was done pursuant to a permit. And more importantly, it was done in connection with the city, because the city has a wastewater, or is that the right terminology?
Treatment plant.
Storm drain. Storm drain, I'm sorry.
Okay.
It was storm drain. Because there's an easement along the property for a storm drain, and so, it was necessary to have the proper elevation in connection with the city's easement. And so, there, we provided, I'm sure the city has it in its records, but we brought that to the attention of the city to show that the placement of fill on the property was done pursuant to a permit and in connection with the storm drain easement. So, but the bigger issue, as we talked about primarily last time, is that the denial of the business license, in part, it was the lack of a complete site plan. But primarily, it was denied on the basis that this use isn't permitted in this zone. And so, our brief addressed that extensively. We spent probably a couple of hours last time.
You know what, and I agree, and I want everybody to be heard, but I think these are facts that we understand and know.
Yes, I am not...
I'm going to ask you to bring something maybe that we don't know.
Right.
And then, we'll move on here.
And so, that's, I had to refresh myself on this, because it's been a month or more. But as we mentioned last time, there's a cement processing plant on the east, there's one on the west, there's one to the northwest. Literally, this property is surrounded by cement operations.
Again, the fact that we understand it.
Yes.
So...
Okay. So, let me just see if there's anything else. I think that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to, if you wouldn't mind, if we, I'm going to ask Patrick, but I'm going to say, we'll deliberate here shortly, and then I'll, you know, as we need to, we'll call upon you to come up if there's any more clarifications that we need. I'm going to, Patrick, can you, I put you on the spot the last time, and this time you just came up, so thank you.
We did receive a packet of information from Mr. Washburn. Our development project coordinator, Melissa, reached back out on October 1st with the requirements that need to be satisfied for an application to be deemed complete. So, we haven't received a formal application yet, only the packet that was delivered to us. One of the things that we have looked at on a staff level is just the extent of what is being proposed, as well as what has already been approved. We've, the original approval was in excess of a year. Site plans are generally approved for a two-year timeframe. It would be problematic to have an amendment, or an amended site plan be approved for something so large in terms of the area. The intent originally, when we brought this process forward to council, was for minor amendments, it was for changes of use, it was not for approving additional phases of projects. This was always anticipated in the original approval as a future phase of the project. So, I don't think it would be proper to bring this through an amended site plan process. I think it can be brought forward through just a regular process. It would be a reapproval with the additional phase included. There are significant things that still need to be addressed that we just haven't looked at on a staff level, just in relation to all of the code requirements. I think it's feasible and possible that it can run through significantly smoother than the previous application went through, particularly where this use is being identified. I think that was the holdup originally, as well as a couple other issues where what was being addressed with the engineer of record at the time was that what was occurring on site was not being reflected on the site plan. And that was the issue of trying to bring that into compliance, and we're at that point today. So, I think our regular site plan process is the most appropriate and transparent process that can be brought forward to avoid a, what would be an amendment to an existing site plan overlapping with a different approval, where no work has started on that original approval yet that we're aware of. At least, no permits have been pulled for any work that has occurred on that. So, I think to keep everything above board and straightforward and everything in the same path, it's prudent from a staff level that it would all be within the same process, and that would be through a new site plan application, should council deem the use to be acceptable.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Patrick. Is there anything, David, Heather, that you would like to add? You've heard things that have been spoken? Okay, all right. Okay, counsel, just kind of talk amongst ourselves and see if we can't draw a direction. And I'm just going to say, if somebody feels comfortable, we can go right into some type of a motion, and we'll see where we go with this. Thoughts?
I've got a question, Mayor. What are the normal hours of operation that you plan on operating?
Seven to five.
Seven to five? Is that within our quiet zone? Does that, is that for that zone? Would that be okay? Seven AM to 5 PM? Okay.
Any other questions?
Patrick, what requirements are there for DEQ?
We don't have anything established directly in our code. There are different environmental health requirements that are established at the state level. Just depends on if we want to review this and peg our code to those requirements, or if we want to have something different, or...
But they would have to follow the state DEQ requirements, correct?
I'm not sure. That's not an area that I'm familiar with.
Okay.
My assumption is that, yes, if that's a state governing requirement, then they would have to follow that. It's just a matter of, have we established similar, stricter, more lenient, or more lenient requirements?
The reason I ask is I drove down there, we had that high wind, what, four days ago? And there was a plume of sand and dust coming off. It was right at dusk, nobody was there, but the wind was blowing 30 miles an hour, and there was just a plume of dust coming off the pile of material that was stockpiled there. So, I wonder, I know you've done your test, but it was, I couldn't make pictures, it was too dark, but it was visible. So, I want to know what the, what requirements they would be to have to follow the dust control and the...
Yeah, I guess, not sure specifically what requirements would exist in state code, but if there were yard spaces where material was being stored, that was, you know, you'd have walls or bays essentially where you're storing material or aggregate, that would screen, but visually or to environmental factors, that could mitigate some of that, but that's something that would need to be explored further.
Any other questions?
You know, based on, I'll just tell where I am. I, you know, I'm not playing here, but I can't get through what we needed to get through for tonight, having received it tonight. I'm sorry, I'm not as fast as the rest of the game. But if we need to go back and do this property, that's the thing that Stacy and I talked about the first time, is, you know, the permitted use and all of those things, the site plan, having the site plan go through the process as it should. I would feel better prepared at that time to be able to do that than go forward tonight, but I'm glad to listen to whatever logic that anyone else on the council has. But I'm, that's where I am.
I think so, too. I got maybe two questions to follow on. Is that an issue if we like wait two weeks? Can we get this on in two weeks to our next one? If we table it? Is it more than two weeks?
You know what, it would be the, it would be the...
It's got the site plan.
Oh, we don't have another one?
But do we need direction in order to make the site plan work? Yes.
It's not an amended site plan.
Correct, and we need to get the direction from council on if they agree with the staff interpretation of the code where we've determined that it's not a permitted use, or if you feel like that's something that needs to be reexamined, if we need to reclarify that in our code, if we need to be more explicit.
So, really, there's a couple of issues here. Number one is, this is an appeal of a business license denial, right? So, it's not necessarily the site plan, that still needs to be taken care of in the proper way. But in order to get that site plan approved, and Patrick, you can correct me if I'm wrong on that process, that would, that site plan would need to go to DRC, correct?
It would go to our DRC for review. Our DRC staff reviewers would then, once finished review, would recommend it to our DRC committee, our board, and that recommendation then would move forward to planning commission, and planning commission would take final action on that.
So, in order for those groups to understand what they should approve, and if concrete crush... crushing is considered a concrete processing event, it really does need to be determined by the city council on how you feel about concrete crushing. So, as it goes through that process for the amended site plan, actually not amended, it's a new site plan. That what gets approved on that site plan does meet the intent of the city code as determined by the city council.
I get that.
So, that's really the crux of it.
I'm wondering if this is, this is the issue that we have in front of us, so maybe that's where we have to, like, where we have to go with, but is it, it's not the normal mechanism that we would make that determination?
Correct.
And I think that's why it's confusing, and I feel like we probably could here as long as that's the way to do it.
I mean, what else? So, what other way is there? I mean, help me understand this.
Change the code.
Yeah.
Clarify the language in the code.
Correct. That's what I was thinking. And that's a longer process.
That, or the applicant could have submitted a land use application that went through that process to determine whether or not this was a permitted use, requested a zone determination letter. I mean, there are lots of different ways procedurally to get to this issue. It is before the council in an unconventional procedural format, for sure. But the administrative decision that was made by the city administrator was that this was not a permitted use, so the business license was denied. So, that is the issue that is before the council, is whether or not you should affirm or whether or not you should overturn the denial of that business license. It's a tricky one. I'll just...
One more question.
Say it is, it is.
Can you have a business license without an approved site plan?
Go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, you would need, you would need an approved site plan to get a valid business license. You won't be able, a business can't have a business license on a parcel that hasn't been approved for that business. So, it would be a condition on that, right? So...
What we have done in the past in instances where someone is trying to come into compliance is that we have had an understanding that you are seeking to address all of the issues, get your site plan approved, and we have paused any enforcement action until a determination's been made. So, essentially, if you're trying to get in, we don't want to punish people the whole way through, when they're working through a process and trying to work with us and within the confines of the process that we've established. So, we've paused enforcement action, we've put a flag on their application, we've put a flag on their pending permit or business license, or any pending permits that they may have through our other processes. And then when a final decision's made on that, we can either issue the business license because they've received their approved site plan, or the site plan has been denied, and there is no hope that it would ever be able to come into compliance, and then we would move to further action at that point.
Right. Well, based on that discussion, I'm wondering, I don't know how the council feels, but for me, I would like to see some mitigation procedures go on so that we're sure that there is an impact to the surrounding properties. If we do that here with the business license, I'm okay with that. I think that's my ultimate concern.
I'm in the same camp. I believe that it's a permitted use with the conditions that we make sure necessary mitigation that we talked about is there. So, it's just the bizarres of how we approve, how we proceed with this for that. So, I would love to hear what anyone else has to say.
I have a question for Heather. Are we wearing our extrajudicial hats tonight? Is, so we're, okay, so that's where we're set. I agree with Councilmember Taylor. I think I can find with conditions that this could be, is a permitted use, but I'm not sure right now how to proceed.
The only thing we can make an action on is...
The business license.
Yeah. Either upholding of David's determination or not. That's all that's in front of us right now.
But can we say we can, we can push this forward with these conditions?
Yes.
Making sure these conditions are there? So...
Well, and the issuance of the business license can be conditioned upon...
The site plan.
Whatever approvals are necessary, or whatever mitigated measures the council puts into place, based on their authority under the code to determine what, as they don't have nefarious impacts of certain kinds. So, it would be appropriate for whatever body is reviewing that ordinance to determine what those impacts are and how they could be mitigated.
Okay.
This is one of the things I was bringing up earlier when I mentioned DEQ. It's something that came up a couple years ago, and we talked about this on a different neighboring parcel, is that this is managed by something, we reference it, we talk about piles of dust, we talk about the mitigation that we do, and the fact that there were tests done to determine that there wasn't an unruly amount of dust pervasive, you know, for all the neighbors to deal with. And yet, nobody seems to be the person that's handling what the DEQ requirement is. I certainly don't want that to be our city's job, to go out there and start testing every single job site, make sure that it's either in or out of compliance. And so, I think that's one of the things that I have a concern with, and I had a concern with it two or three years ago when we were talking about this on a neighboring parcel. But we have to come up with some way so that the things that are going to be, I forget, Heather, what you just called them, but pervasively...
Negative impacts.
Negative impacts on the neighbors. That's the whole thing we're trying to, you know, quantify. But yet, clearly, dust or environmental quality being run by, so to Patrick's answer, I feel like we do need to have that as a way that we can determine whether it is either in or out of compliance for that. I mean, we're...
You know what? I agree. I'm thinking, if we allow this as a permitted use with certain conditions, can we address this in our coterie right to actually refer to the right places and the right measuring sticks for, you know, the compliance with the DEQ, the DWQ, whatever that is? Because you're right, I don't know what parts per million represents this. I don't know how we're going to test it. In the right conditions, it's, what, dusty? But you know what? Responsible people will throw water down. I mean, they will make sure that it, and I know that we have some kind of a benchmark for that, because people come out, I mean, their construction sites are always just tamped down. And I know if we didn't, if they didn't feel it was a requirement, they probably wouldn't do it. Maybe not everybody, but a lot of people.
Sorry to interrupt. That prompted a thought. Is there a SWIP requirement in industrial zone?
There should be. Should be SWIPed, it'd be citywide.
So, well, I'm saying during construction.
We got...
It's, yeah, during the, during an improvement, but is it an ongoing? Do you have an ongoing SWIP permit in perpetuity?
Because of the nature of what they do, they would have stormwater requirement.
And again, that's under DEQ as well.
That's under the DEQ purview as well, right? The municipal stormwater system requirement, the MS4 requires all of these businesses to comply, and it's an ongoing thing, not just during construction, but ongoing. That's for stormwater.
Yep.
The same kind of permit is required for fugitive dust through the DEQ. So, that is, that's a, they're the ones who implement that program and administrate. It won't be the city that goes out there to say, hey, we're going to take a test on your air quality today. That's not us. That would be DEQ.
Right. So, can we, and that's where I'm trying to get to, is I don't want this to be a burden on our staff.
Right.
To go out and confirm compliance of any business.
And/or ourselves.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think we should...
I think the idea there, in my mind, would be, can we require that a business license has a restriction that says, you show me that your DEQ qualified or compliant.
Yeah.
That your MS4 is in compliance and has a track record of doing that. Now, we have something to hang our hat on that says, we're just confirming, and it's conditional to the business license, which is the actual thing that's in front of us today. Is that something that would work?
And you would report it differently? But there are, essentially, that...
I'm just trying to think, how can we get a confirmation that it's in compliance with something we don't even control?
Yeah, it might be enough for the council to just say, and this is my very limited understanding of how DEQ, they may do spot checks, but my understanding is it's more often complaint-based, where they come out, test, make a determination. So, it might be enough for the council to just say, yeah, we want, you know, whatever operation is going to occur on this particular site to be in compliance with the state law. They're required to be in compliance with the state law anyway, but...
But to prove that, to be subject to an awarded business license on an annual basis.
I think that's probably a reasonable restriction to put on...
Is it already implied?
It is implied.
Are we just saying?
It is implied.
Say it out loud.
What the council is, what Councilman Hunter is asking is, can we put in for an additional enforcement mechanism in place to ensure that the applicant is complying with DEQ?
I guess, how would you see that, though? How would you make the state, like, if you're going to require the business to get a state test, like, how do we or the business make the DEQ? Because if the DEQ says, hey, we're not going to go test them this year, do we shut them down?
Well, no, they've been able to go get their own tests anyway. They've already shown that.
Mr. Dunn, will you step, whoever's...
What you don't understand is, the public record, we don't hear too much away from the microphone when we're doing the minutes.
Okay. Mike Dunn, the problem that you'll have, and when we did the testing and reporting to you, was where was the dust coming from? I'm going to tell you right now, I'm not guilt free, but where's also two other concrete plants in the area blowing dust, having bag houses on top of their storage containers, of which sometimes they get overfilled and dust goes flying everywhere, and they spend a day cleaning up their mess, but it's never cleaned. That part of it is, it's never cleaned.
This is exactly my point. It should not be the burden of our staff and our city to ensure your compliance.
That's right.
And that's where I'm trying, and I think Heather understands where I think I'm coming from, is the idea that how can we tie a business license application to them appropriately coming in and confirming, yes, I'm compliant. Look, the state says I'm compliant. We can't continually to...
When they renew?
When they renew their business license. So, that right now, in order to have this be the case, fine, prove to me that you're compliant with DEQ, MS4, all of your other permit, SWIP, whatever it is. So, that we can then say, now, we're making a, an approval of a business license or a renewal of a business license, conditioned on some satisfactory compliance that's no longer in our...
Any complaint that comes out needs to go straight to DEQ.
Agreed.
End of discussion, because they're going to have to come down and investigate and check out me and my two neighbors and determine who's at fault, if there is a fault, if it's dangerous. I've had many of them between OSHA, DEQ, all the rest, I've gone through that. Somebody made it, neighbor made a complaint when I was in oral, and here come OSHA, and we went through it with OSHA. OSHA got a hold of DEQ. DEQ come out, they worked together on it. I'm not afraid of...
I know you're not.
I'm not afraid of that, and I don't want you to have the burden, because it doesn't need to be yours, they take care of it.
I just want to know that when we're giving a business license, we have something to hold on to that says, we're confirming that they are in compliance. I mean, we're basing this, perhaps overturning of your recommendation that it is not an allowed use, based on, well, the dust is in a compliance, compliant level. None of us are in a position to speak to that. We're going solely off the conversation of somebody else at the DEQ saying, or some other test that was done, saying that it is within an appropriate parts per million. We need to, we need to rely back on that or tie, in my opinion, need to tie the business license to that, so that then it's on their shoulders. In order to get a business license, these are the five things every year that you've got to walk in here and show up with. I want an MS4 permit that says that you've been in compliance. I want a, I want a DEQ, you know, clean bill of health, or whatever it is, so that then, when we go for it and renew it for another year, it's based on those things. Those are, those are the kinds of things that, to me, are important. We did not do it on the last one, and now here, we have the neighbor saying, well, that's not even my dust.
Tom, do it.
I agree. I know. I know. I'm just saying, they're going to say the exact same thing when they come in, and they're going to have the exact same conversation, say, well, that's his dust, that's not my dust.
Would we?
Yeah, go ahead. I'm going to have Patrick, go ahead, Patrick.
So, essentially, what you're asking for in terms of addressing something, addressing a renewal would be no pending enforcement issues with DEQ, no endorsements against the business owner for anything that may be pending getting addressed.
Yeah. I don't know how to verbalize exactly what it is. I just want to see that it's a clean bill of health from the DEQ and a current one within 30 days or whatever of the renewal. I don't want one from, you know, last December, and hey, well, it's been in the same year.
Yeah. My worry is that on some of that, that's just a lower production day where you may not stir up, or it's on a rainy day and your dust is not a problem, or... I'm just trying to figure out how...
I don't know the answer to that. I think it's a great question. I just not, I'm not prepared to answer how exactly we're going to quantify that.
Well, that actually brings up a question that I'm thinking about. If the city gets a complaint about dust, do we have the ability to close a business down, even though we haven't done the DEQ test?
It would, I think it would go to DEQ.
I'd take it to, yeah.
I mean, same as an MS4.
Yeah.
If we agree to, yes. If it's major, no. Like it or not, I have this on my gravel pits and other places.
Yeah. Okay.
Can I, yeah, just offer maybe two thoughts here. What Councilmember Hunter is proposing may be something that the council could consider including in their business license ordinance.
Exactly, I thought.
That ordinance is under review right now and is going to be substantially changed. So, that is something that would be helpful, frankly, for the city as a whole, because that would apply to everyone who is doing this type of business in this particular industrial zone.
Yeah.
So, as far as the issue of dust goes for this particular applicant, as the council is considering, you know, mitigation measures, it might be even more helpful rather than relying on a DEQ standard that they must comply with anyway, but look at the actual mitigation that can be done on site and in response to the conditional issues that are already laid out in our code, right? You know, I know at the last hearing, the applicant already set forth a number of mitigating steps that they do on a daily basis to ensure that there isn't any dust. I think there's water trucks, there's sweeping, there's, you know, so if there are things that can be done on the daily here, that doesn't have to do with the state standard that's difficult to apply, but could address those negative impacts on the site, perhaps the council could focus on those.
Sure. Because if we said you have to put water four times or whatever, and they're not doing that...
So, but this is my concern with that, is that then now it becomes staff.
Yeah.
So, who are we sending out there to inspect that? This is my point. If we put, okay, you got to put sprinklers on. I mean, are we literally going to send somebody down there weekly and, or every day or whatever, and say, hey, we're going to...
Sam, thank you.
Sam, small...
For the record, will you say your name, sir?
Sam Kelly, Public Works Director. We actually do that. Our stormwater management group, we have two folks in there, and they do go out there and ensure the long-term stormwater management plans are being actively mitigated, that they are doing what they're supposed to do. All these developments come through, they do a long-term stormwater management plan that is recorded with the property. So, as these uses come in, we go through an extensive process of identifying the uses that are going to be happening there. The owners and/or developers, they go ahead and list all of their mitigation measures, and then on an annual basis, we'll go out there and make sure that they're doing those things. So, it's similar to the same issue we had with the massage parlor. I mean, they're given a license, they're going and doing things, and then you're trying to make sure... I mean, they're given a license, they're going and doing things, and then you're trying to make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to.
I'm sure Mr. Dunn appreciates the commonality, but anyways, but it's a similar type process as we do have to go out and verify that they're doing what they're supposed to.
Right, no, I-
So Sam, are you, are you, feel good about what we already have in place is sufficient for an intense use like this?
Right, so we have all those things in place. And to his point, they have those there. This is what they're supposed to be doing on the daily, but there is an occasion where there is gonna be a complaint and then we go out and respond and look at it. And that's what our stormwater management guys do, is that's what they're supposed to do, is make sure that those things are being taken care of.
Are they, are they, are they beyond the stormwater, though? And are, does everything related to the stormwater? Because dust does affect the stormwater.
It's called stormwater management, but it's also your best management practices, which is dust and things like that. So all those things are-
So no noise?
Well, there is to a certain, I mean, whatever the zone allows and they look at.
I gotta give them credit. I did drive down there and when you're crushing wet, there's no dust coming out of the crusher. You know, it's pretty cool. But I saw it blow off the pile a few days later, but, yeah.
Sam, we're gonna have you take, sit there with Patrick for a minute till we get through this. Thank you for that, that peace of mind.
I do know in one of the other areas, we did require them to put in taller fence and we required some trees landscaping.
Yeah, I think a berm even.
Oh, a berm?
But-
Like, I'm wondering if we wanna replicate-
No, these are conditions for us to give them a business license.
So you know what, I mean, if, is everybody, we did the agreement that we can, this is a, we're gonna make some conditions, but we're gonna permit this, correct? And so let's, let's just talk about conditions. And if, you know, if somebody just wants to go down them and move this, if there's a condition that somebody's not feeling good about, we'll stop on it and we'll talk it through.
I mean, unless we want, yeah, yeah.
I don't know how else to move this forward.
Yeah, no, I mean, we've got some notes in front of us. And one of, one of the thoughts, as I read through this quickly, in, in front of us, we have paragraph 11. It's relating to, you know, "Concrete crushing or concrete recycling must not result in the generation of any of the following emissions or effects. If such generation is harmful to persons, is readily discernible, readily discernible beyond the boundary of the industrial zone." And that's one that I underwrite because I'm curious. So I don't know that we want it to go to the zone. We want that to be contained within, like, my own property. I don't want my crushing operation to just, well, it only blew two neighbors away. And you know what I'm saying? Like, those are-
So that, that language is actually taken directly from the zoning ordinance?
So how do we, so can we choose? We're making all sorts of conditions specific to this particular application.
It's also readily discernible beyond the boundary, oh, wait, sorry, you read that. Creates an impact readily observable from the, a public road.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
Or violates the applicable state or federal environmental or safety standards. That kind of rolls into DEQ at that point.
I think for me, these would be above and beyond the minimum threshold, in my mind.
Sure, they're conditions beyond the zone, yeah.
If we, if we go forward with this, at least that's how I'm interpreting this, we're willing to consider this inside this zone or a business license to essentially overturn David's recommendation or, or not even recommendation, but his-
Finding.
Finding, determination because of these things. We're mitigating it with these things that are above and beyond what are typical for this area or perhaps would be considered as minimum standards in the area. And so for me, I don't know, I- Yeah, but I'm just saying, this is recommending it based on the entirety of the zone, which-
But we can put in other conditions, right?
That's why I'm saying, the zone is the one that I'm hung up on, because I totally want it to be the entirety of the zone.
If it's specific to the site, sorry.
No, I appreciate this, 'cause that's-
If it's specific to, like, if the conditions that we have are specific to the site, example, like the landscaping or the height of the piles or the height of a wall or fence, those things are specific to the site itself already, so I don't have to worry as much about that.
Correct, yeah, good point. I just, yeah, I just worry that, well, it is readily discernible beyond the boundaries of my site, but it's still not beyond the boundaries of my zone, of the entire zone. That's concerning to me. Anyway, I do agree if we wanna go past that, but the wall around the property, piles not to exceed the height of a building on the property, those all seem reasonable.
Dust falls into the DEQ regulation already.
Yeah. I just, I just, the problem is we don't, we don't ever look at that. That's why it bothers me.
We have the same thing going on, though. So we have to put that in a new renewal of the permit because it's the same-
That's why I brought it up. It's exactly why I brought it up, because it's the same problem.
We also wanna limit types of concrete or types of materials that are on the site.
I, well, you don't need to tell me, but my understanding was that it was only concrete, there's not, you know, there's not-
Clean concrete.
It's clean concrete.
Clean concrete, no bar, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, to me, that's-
Yeah, we have every bar, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
There's no, there's-
Every bar can go through the shade of every part, has to be processed beforehand. There's noise and noise and all the rest, and we're gonna do that.
I love the hours, the comment in here about the hours. I think that's very appropriate. One of the thoughts that came to my mind is that, I mean, can we just, I mean, could you put a third and a fourth and a fifth mobile or temporary crushing unit in there just because it fits on the property? Is there some sort of restriction to how many we can do? I remember the Ferrari of crushing plants that was approved some other time and, and it was like, well, we're only gonna run it at, you know, 30 miles an hour. And I remember having a conversation, this thing will run at 200 miles an hour, but we promised we're only gonna run it at 30 miles an hour. And so, I mean, that, those are the kinds of things that I think about when I, when I, when I say, okay, well, yeah, we're gonna give conditional approval, and then all of a sudden four, I'm not saying you've done this, I'm just saying, how do we protect from that?
If you put all the machines in there, the place is not the concrete.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so then it becomes-
They would have to comply, if they brought in a second, let's say, they would still have to comply the exact same way that they are with that. So it would still be no material going over, the noise would have to be X, it would still have to have an eight-foot fence, we would still have to crush between whatever those hours were, say, that are going to be, whether they have two machines or one machine.
So, but then, so the only way to make that accommodation is to have trucks running non-stop. So you just fill it right into a truck and the truck drives away, and so now you've got non-stop vehicles. I mean, that's just an example, right? Well, that currently, at least according to our city administrator's determination, doesn't apply for this. So that's my point. If we're making a recommendation to overturn David's determination that it doesn't fit in this zone, then we probably need to be, in my opinion, more prescribed in how we're willing to do that. So I-
Well, do you want to come up with recommendations for conditions later or just hammer them out right now?
I'm fine with doing them later. I feel like this, I think you made that comment, Clark, that this is pretty late in the hour to try and go through and have them. I'm, I'm on board with the idea that we can get to a point where a business license is, there is, there's a way forward, in my mind. I'm probably not prepared to say, these are the six conditions that I'm prepared to say have to be met. I don't know if that's the answer, if we can-
You know what, though, but does that give clarity to the site?
That's, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
I mean, because if not, I think that it-
Then we have to make the sausage today.
Yeah, I think we do. I don't know how we get the ball rolling and give, unless we come back literally through our own code, codify it. But, you know what, if we need to make the sausage, I say at least make it as close as we can.
Yeah, I think as much direction as we, if you want us to proceed tonight and be able to accept a site plan application, potentially tomorrow morning, as much direction as staff can get from you tonight would be very helpful. And as we need to clarify anything further, that would be helpful to do in the code rewrite, knowing however that in this situation, if we receive an application, they'll be vested in the current situation.
So I'm gonna ask you, Heather, do we wanna talk about findings of facts or do we need to go into a conclusion? How formal do you feel like we need to have this?
I think it depends on what, how the council wants to proceed. If the council is ready to make a determination as to whether or not to affirm or overrule the business license conditionally, you know, such that the applicant at least knows that if it's overruled, this is going to be a permitted use based on conditions that are, you know, within the scope of what's permitted in the I-1 zone, if that's helpful to the applicant. And then the council could table those conditions and discuss them and determine what it is, but that would at least allow planning and the applicant to move forward with the site plan process. It's gonna be a little bit difficult, though, because these are very specific, yeah, yeah. So, you know, you could, you could, you could go that way, you could try to hammer it out tonight. If you're gonna hammer it out tonight, we should probably put findings on the, on the record. At least general findings and have, be specific enough that we can provide that information to the applicant and then we can prepare and issue written findings that kind of flesh everything out. But does that give you a little bit of direction, counsel?
Yeah, it does. And I will say this, I mean, you know, council, we have, I mean, we have another meeting coming up in a few weeks. If we wanna take this, like, I don't hate to keep bringing people back. I feel like we're smarter right now than we were the last time and there's no sense going back and rehashing that. But if we want to be better prepared, we can put this on the next council agenda.
Well, we have one before, sorry, Mayor. I was just thinking, do we have one before Thanksgiving?
Yes. It's gonna be full, we're gonna be late. But if, but if, if that's where, if we need to wait to make the sausage to do it right, it's probably a wise consideration. And I think the applicant would want something to be done right as well. Again, we're in a little bit uncharted territory and we can think on our feet, but we wanna be fair to you. We wanna be fair to us, we wanna be fair to the neighbors. We're wearing a lot of different, we're looking at a lot of different perspectives, just, Paul, so.
I guess I just have a thought, and, sorry, I know you're about to, I guess I have two thoughts. It's like, just as this package shows, a lot of the decisions we make, I wouldn't say come back to bite us, but they last years. Like, some of these decisions are in this package for like 2019, 2020. So it's important that the decisions we make aren't just for this, but there's something that can be used multiple years down the road. And so I'm fine with pushing, but I think that if we do push to whatever it is mid-November, that we really make a good effort as a council, and that's me included, to get to know everything so that we can come here prepared to make a decision, so that we do the right thing by them, by us, and by the future residents and everything like that. But, so those are kind of my two thoughts, is yeah, the decisions last forever, but if we are gonna push it, that we really get down to it and come up with a decision with facts, findings, and everything, so that when we do it again, we just say, yes, this is what it is, and we're gonna move forward with that. So we don't, like, table it again or something.
So I'll add one additional thing. I think this is a permitted use under the conditions that, that are there. So I don't know if that does any good. I'm not asking for a straw poll here or anything of that nature. I believe it's conditioned use based on what's already taking place down there. To me, it's a, it's a done deal, but we've gotta be able to put the necessary conditions. And I don't know whether it needs to go beyond the things that we've talked about because if we, if, you know, the air quality and those things are already in place, just by nature, I'm fine making the sausage tonight. We talk about a fence if we talk about it. But if that's not enough, I'm fine, I'm fine going on. I don't think, I don't think it's fair to continue to push this. But if we can get it all taken care of in, in two weeks, then I'm for it. But I happen to believe it should be a permitted use.
I think, you know, I think-
I agree. I think it could be a permitted use with conditions, and I don't think, wanna make sure that they're, the right conditions are not unreasonable to the applicant. I wanna be fair, but we've also gotta be fair to the neighbors. So I wanna make sure we do it right.
Mayor, I'm happy to, I've, I've been making notes and I've got several red lines. I'd be happy to throw something out if we wanna try it and see if it's something we're considering or if we want to-
You know what, I would say, of your, of your demolition, I mean, again, I think it's gonna come down to a second and a vote, and if nobody, if we're not comfortable, the votes will dictate.
I'm gonna avoid going through the findings of fact section of this. We can reference that. Can we reference that? Is that okay, Heather? If I, or do I need to read the entire findings of fact before I go there?
We had findings of facts on our last meeting that we could refer to.
You do, but I-
You want me to read it? I'll just bear with it. I'll go with it.
That would be my preference.
Okay. So bear with me while my four pages of findings of fact start this. And then hopefully we can-
Number five, no pending DEQ actions annually upon license renewal. On the back page, on the very back, where it just stands, number four, we're, keep going, one more. There, so you've got number four, add number five. That's no pending DEQ actions annually upon license renewal. Is that unreasonable? Mr. Dunn, do you feel like that's unreasonable to have no pending?
Paul, you're real, I'm gonna have to come forward here. I mean, I'm assuming you're an applicant, right, Paul? Not the friend of an applicant.
I'm confident we can meet any conditions you have, right? I think the question we have, knowing that it's gonna happen in a couple of weeks, when we start the site plan process, maybe.
Well, we're hoping to get you an answer here soon.
Yeah, we're gonna try to mask the whole thing.
Sausage is in the making, Paul.
Okay, Mayor, if I could, I'd like to make a motion that, subject to the findings and conclusions, the findings of fact that number one, applicant's used done construction, seeks a business license to operate concrete crushing and concrete recycling operations at 510 East, 1700 South, American Fork, Utah, located in the I-1 industrial zone. Two, applicant brings the appeal, this appeal pursuant to AF Commercial Code 5.04.170. Number three, nature of operations, the applicant's business involves receiving broken concrete, crushing it and processing it into engineered fill and road-based materials for use in construction. This activity is intended to recycle concrete from demolition projects and provide usable construction materials locally. Applicant's operations are limited to the processing of concrete. No other solids or waste are included in the crushing or recycling. Number four, surrounding uses, the subject property is located adjacent to or near existing concrete batch plants and other industrial operations of potentially comparable impact, including American Eagle-ready mix. Number five, expert environmental report. Applicant submitted a professional industrial hygiene and environmental report, RMEC 2025, assessing dust, silica, and noise emissions from the crushing operation. The report found that noise was below OSHA and other state and local standards. Dust and particulates were controlled with no visible emissions beyond the boundary. Silica levels were below OSHA limits and overall, the operation did not create other harmful or discernible noxious emissions. Number six, mitigation measures. Applicant employs dust suppression, water trucks track out sweeping, recycled water use, daily washing and sweeping and other mitigation practices. Applicant has committed to continued compliance with mitigation measures and to implement additional conditions imposed by the city. Seven, site plan. The subject property received site plan approval for certain portions of the subject property in 2024. The approved site plan did not include the area where the concrete crushing and concrete recycling activity occurs, nor did it include these operations as a use on the subject property. Number eight, administrative denial. On May 1st, 2025, the city administrator denied the applicant's business license application on grounds that concrete crushing is not a permitted use in the I-1 zone and constitutes heavy industrial. Number nine, non-conforming use claim. Applicant has argued that the concrete crushing operation should be treated as a legal non-conforming use predating the 2019 annexation. The record, including aerial photos and lack of prior approvals, does not establish lawful continuous use. Further, applicant has not provided evidence of a valid county license, site plan, or permitting, or permit authorizing concrete crushing and concrete recycling before annexation of the subject property into the city. Section two, conclusions. The council hereby concludes. Number 10, permitted use. Based on a careful review of the code and the record before it, council concludes that concrete crushing and concrete recycling is a form of processing of materials within the plain meaning of AF Commercial Code 17.4.503B1. Accordingly, the council concludes that concrete crushing and concrete recycling is a permitted use in the I-1 industrial zone, subject to conditions outlined therein. Number 11, subject conditions. AF Commercial Code 17.4.506B1A places conditions on uses within the I-1 zon-
AF Commercial Code 17.4.506B1A places conditions on uses within the I-1 zone. As provided in this code, the operation of the applicant's concrete crushing and concrete recycling must not result in the generation of any of the following emissions or effects if such generation is harmful to persons, is readily discernible beyond the boundary of the site, creates an adverse visual impact readily observable from a public road, or violates applicable state or federal environmental or safety standards. These prohibited emissions or effects include but are not limited to noxious odors, fumes, smoke, noise, vapor, vibration, glare, or any similar emission or effect that meets one or more of the above emissions or effect criteria. Based on preliminary plans provided to the council by the applicant, a copy of which will be included with these findings and conclusions, the council finds that the following nonexhaustive list includes reasonable conditions to be placed upon the subject property. Number A, an eight-foot fence, an eight-foot concrete fence must be constructed around the perimeter of all areas where the concrete crushing and concrete recycle operations occur, including any storage of materials used in or resulting from the operations. Number B, the height of any stored or processed materials or piles may not exceed the height of any building located on the property. Number C, dust control must meet the applicable Department of Environmental Quality, Division of Air Quality standards, and applicant must commit to continue current and future dust mitigation practices. These dust mitigation standards and emissions include and are applicable to all operations within the approved site plan. Number D, the municipal solid waste or construction debris may be delivered, processed, or stored on the subject property. Only material containing concrete only for the purpose of concrete crushing and concrete recycling shall be delivered, processed, or stored on the subject property. Concrete crushing and concrete recycling operations may only occur between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. These conditions are based upon the information that has been provided to the council to date and may be modified based on needs discovered in the land use, planning, and approval process, or any modifications or changes the applicant makes to the preliminary plans. In any case, compliance with all other applicable provisions of the American Fork City Code is also required. Number 12, nonconforming use. Applicant has not met the burden to establish a legal nonconforming use. To qualify, the use must have been lawful prior to annexation, continuously maintained, and properly documented. Insufficient evidence was presented to establish this claim. Number 13, site plan requirement. AF Commercial Code 17.6.101 and AF Commercial Code 17.4.503 require full site plan approval before commencing or license, licensing an industrial use. Because the applicant has not yet obtained approval of a site plan that incorporates the concrete crushing and concrete recycling operation, or that addresses the conditional nature of such use, the city cannot authorize issuance of a business license at this time, but may grant the business license in the future if site plan approval is granted consistent with all applicable provisions of the American Fork City Code and these findings and conclusions. Section three, decision. Based hereon, I move that the city council conditionally overrules the city administrator's denial of Dunn Construction's business license application as provided herein. Number two, that the council find the concrete crushing and concrete recycling is a permitted use in the I-1 industrial zone as, quote, "processing of materials," unquote. Subject to the conditions included in American Fork Commercial Code 17.4.503B1 and further set forth herein, but find that the city cannot issue a business license under Title V of the city code unless and until the applicant one obtains approval of the site plan and specifically incorporates the concrete crushing and concrete recycling operation, two, implements and obtains land use approval of the conditions outlined in AF Commercial Code 17.4.503B1 and outlined herein, number three, demonstrates compliance with all other requirements for the I-1 zone, and number four, demonstrates compliance with all other applicable laws, rules, ordinances, and regulations necessary for business license approval. Number three, that the council further find that the applicant has not demonstrated legal nonconforming use status for the subject property under Commercial Code Section 17.1.501. Number four, that the council directs that in evaluating any future land use application submitted by applicant for the subject property, city staff will apply the city council's findings and conclusions provided herein, subject to compliance with all other applicable city code requirements. And number five, provide evidence of no pending DEQ MS4 or other state mandated regulations.
Second.
I doubt it.
Mother of man. So, I, I mean, I'm seeing clapping and happy, and we're, so, okay, I have a motion for the record by Councilman Hunter, and a second by Councilmember. Are there any discussions on this motion?
I have one. The only one I'm considering, and I'm, I just want to throw this out there. So, the height of the piles, can I exceed the height of a building located on the property? Is there a height limit on buildings on this property? Like, can they build 30-foot buildings?
Forty-five feet.
Okay, so that's an issue. So, I don't, and I don't know, I could be wrong, but I don't know if the pile of material should be higher than the wall. I don't know if we should have 45-foot piles.
That's for yards, then, yeah.
I don't know, is that, so is it okay to have 45-foot piles of trash?
Of dirt, not trash.
Well, dirt, recycled, yeah.
It's concrete.
Well, but it's dust. That's, that's the whole point.
Yeah, so, and if you have an eight-foot wall, we have a 45-foot pile of dust, I don't think it's possible to be...
I think, I, I, I thought that one through all week, and I thought, as long as it's not, if we're driving down there, we have other uses that are close by, that this is not this anomaly, that this is there, that it's coherent. And I think 45, I think that's an acceptable level. Now, that's tall, but I know how it's processed. I mean, you have conveyors, they go up, and...
What's your typical conveyor height right now?
Yeah, I'd say a belt, a stacker belt is what it is, 45 feet standard. It's not, you can get, I can get super stackers to go higher, but it would not fit on that piece probably.
So, I guess what's the point of the wall, then?
Yeah, the eight-foot would be really tough enough, I mean, it's...
Yeah.
You gotta go at least as tall as a good loader, but the stat, that conveyor's gonna take...
As long as there's control in the dust, I mean, whether it's sprinkled or whatever needs to be done, I'm okay with the 45, but as long as the dust is controlled.
Okay?
That's, I guess I just see, I, I just don't know the point of the wall, then. If you have an eight-foot wall, we have a 45-foot pile, 45-foot pile of dust. I obviously don't run, I'm not a construction guy, but I don't see the point of the wall if the dust is, was that four times higher, five times higher?
Well, if you're seeing, you're seeing the tops of piles, you're, you're not seeing the groundwork and everything that goes along, a little bit of a sound mitigation, not much, because it's only eight feet tall, but...
I would say it's a safety thing for me.
Yeah.
We screen all of our jobs and fence them. There's, there's a safety component to that.
And it keeps material from not leaving the site at the base level.
Yeah, it's also a little, like, orderly and beautification.
Like, there's a wall around the streets, and you just didn't see anything pass out of something, like, look over it, but that's about it.
Yeah. And, and, okay, yeah. All right, anything else, Councilman?
Lots of buildings, guys, a lot of buildings in there too.
Okay, so, any other, I may have a motion in a second. Any other questions on the motion?
Can I just have a clarification? Is the council modifying the requirement regarding the height of the piles being the height of the building, or 45 feet?
No, I just want to say... Whatever, we can say 45 feet or less.
Forty-five feet or less.
Not to exceed 45 feet or less.
I have no problem modifying my motion to conclude that.
Okay, let's go over the whole thing.
Okay, I'll start over again. Does anybody have another water bottle?
Okay.
Let me point out where that is, I guess. Where's the...
So, I, I, good, good catch. I thought that, and then we'll talk about it.
It's on the conditions.
You might only build a 20-foot tall building.
Okay.
It limits you.
The height of any stored or processed material or piles may not exceed 45 feet or less located on the property.
Yeah, so just, yeah. That's in 11B.
11B, yeah.
All right.
I circled that, as you said, okay. All right, I have a... Did you amend the motion and the second, Councilmember Taylor, on that?
I did.
Any discussion on this motion, then? All right, I'm gonna move on to a vote. Councilmember Hunter?
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll?
Aye.
Councilmember John?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Holly?
Aye.
Okay. Item number three is a consideration and action to enter into a closed session to discuss items described in Utah State Code 52-4-204 and 52-4-205. Do I have a motion? I have a motion by Councilmember Taylor, second by Councilmember...
I was implying it to the form of this, but I can't use it.
You're as impressed that we were, as we were, that right...
So, I have a motion by Councilmember Hunter, second by Councilmember, was it Taylor? I'm gonna do a roll call on there.
Taylor and John.
Taylor and John, okay, I'm gonna go for a roll call vote. Councilmember Carroll?
Aye.
Councilmember John?
Aye.
Councilmember Holly?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Hunter?
Aye.
Okay, for the public, we are going to move on to our downstairs, where we will be in a special session to discuss real estate, and we will open the door, and we will convene city council back downstairs at the conclusion of that meeting. So, thank you for being here.